Twenty-four, I've really been kind of just working behind the scenes. We're wrapping up our implementation and project identification phase right now. And so, once that's finalized, I will be taking that back out to the public, really looking for kind of final opinions on those things. And so, what we're here to talk about tonight is really what that process has been and what we've been doing behind the scenes. So far in that public engagement, we've done a lot of different various outreaches. And at the end of this month, we will be having a council workshop. And so, that is both Councilwoman Berg and Councilwoman Lutske and a couple of members of East Grand Forks City Council as well be coming together to kind of talk about some of these different projects. And really, how do we start to take this out past that implementation phase? Identify some champions? And how do we make sure that this is a project that really works for the city of Grand Forks? So, these community advisory groups are a way for us to really get some vision into the community, basically from some of the different service providers. So, our four community advisory groups on this project are Safe Kids. I think we're all pretty familiar with them. The Downtown Development Association, University Park Neighborhood, and the Housing Authority. These four groups give us insight by reviewing a lot of materials while also kind of providing us feedback from what they're hearing from their constituents in the community. In May, we will be having our next open house. So, be lookout, be on the lookout for some more information on that. So, the different elements of an action plan, just to go over this really quick, are basically making sure that we have some coordination with city leadership on both sides, as well as with the county and DOT. A safety committee, so this is really an entire governing body to look at how we make our streets safer for all users throughout a community. And then, coming up with a systemic level analysis. This is basically a safety, a high-level way of saying, kind of looking at it on a broad level of how do we make streets safe for all users? So, kind of working through all of this process is how we come up with this safety action plan. And then, from there, we go into that implementation and project identification. So, this is kind of that last step where we've looked at all of the different elements, basically policy decisions, things like that that make our streets safer. Now, we start identifying what are some of those projects. And so, that's probably the biggest thing that I'm here to talk about is those big ones, those big matrix of kind of these infrastructure solutions and projects. So, we use these high injury networks. These start to look at our entire roadway network in the MPO area to identify where crashes are happening and where crashes are maybe the most severe. And then, what we do is we take that, we line that up with some different projects that are already aligned here in the community. And so, what this is, looks at both corridor projects as well as intersection projects, basically anything that the city already has kind of forecasted. So, that way, we can start identifying the funding for these through this SS4A funding pot. So, the way that we prioritize which projects are going to be boiling up to the top is, like I said, look at that HIM, that high injury network, and then looking at it on an above critical crash rate. So, saying, okay, where is maybe the most unsafe corridors, intersections? Where are those happening? How do we reduce those crashes? What are going to be the best strategies? And then, also, what are we hearing from the community? So, this is also from what we've heard from you, what we've heard from some project interviews or community advisory groups. So, a lot of different engagement goes into that. And then, also looking at it on an equity analysis area. So, really kind of giving points for all these different things and then boiling that down on cost as well. And so, the maximum amount of points that these could get is 35. So, these are really draft high-level. We've been working with our steering committee on it, but we did want to show you kind of how this is starting to boil up. So, up top, you'll see all those green. Those are all East Grand Forks projects, while the blue ones are those on the Grand Forks side, with the darker color ones being DOT projects. So, these are kind of the segment road strips. So, these are based on that score like I just talked about, starting to look at what ones we really want to implement in the community. And then, we're also doing the same thing with intersections. So, here you can see, same thing, if these are all the East Grand Forks intersections that we've identified and started to work on that, and then the ones over here in Grand Forks as well. And so, looking at these, this is where we start to say, okay, these are going to be the intersections. And how do we package these up for a really good, healthy grant to be able to bring in some money for the city of Grand Forks to do some safety implementation? So, our next steps are really finalizing this prioritization list, that council workshop that we're going to have in late April, and then our open house that's going to be in May. So, with that, like I said, tried to move as fast for you as possible. So, I apologize if I went too fast, but I wanted to come and fill you in on things and let you know about that council workshop. So, you as a group can also kind of share your thoughts with both of the other council members who are going to be at that workshop. So, if there's certain things that you want to see from that workshop, could be a really good opportunity for that engagement as well.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Weber. Questions from Mr. Weber, who are with the MPO? Seeing none, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Item 2.3, Strategic Priority Housing Development Action Planning. Mr. Brooks? Is the attachment actually out online? It's not showing up on mine.
Should be. Maybe refresh it. It should be out there. It was out there earlier today.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you, Chair Sandy, members of the committee. We're going to be providing you a quick snapshot housing development action plan that we put together. We're going to start, and I'll dive right in. We're going to start with some context, what the market's doing. I think a lot of people have understood that we have some issues going on, pricing, availability of housing going on. And we want to show you some stats that kind of bear that out. Medium home value, right now, it's increased 64%. Hundred and forty-four thousand to two hundred and thirty-seven thousand between 2010 and 2022. Those are the latest numbers that we have right now. And these came out of the consolidated plan that we just had before you last week. Medium rent increased 49%, 571 to 851. Our medium household income grew 46%. So, it's not keeping up with those costs of housing. So, people are putting more and more of their income towards housing, which is not good. We are concerned about that. So, that's some of the trend that we're seeing. Here, this provides a little bit of the gap that we're seeing, both in the rental and the ownership market, kind of the key takeaways, significant deficit at higher and lower end on the rental housing levels, and greater supply needed to meet that demand. Ownership gap as well. Grand Forks performs okay at that upper level, but major gaps exist on that entry-level workforce housing that we need to look at. Here's some of our multi-family permit numbers. Did I skip one? Yeah, I sure did. Single-family permits, I'll start with that. You can see the overall trend line is just down. So, we went back to 2013, tried to mash up all these numbers. Relatively, just an overall decrease. So, in those last, I'll say 23 and 24, which were our last two full years that we have, you're looking at 80 combined and 90 combined permits. And that's just an overall trend that's going downwards. We're just not keeping up on the supply side. That's going to obviously have a negative effect on the rents.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah.
Any reason why our single-family home builders aren't building as many houses as they used to?
Well, I think overall, you're seeing just anecdotally, I guess, I can say that interest rates are certainly creeping up. That's not helping. That's a more recent trend, but that's certainly not helping. And I just think it's, you know, it's hard to say what one factor is, but we can certainly have some interviews, try to find out from the developers and realtors where they're at with folks that are looking as well.
Do you know how many licensed home builders we have today?
Less than when we did the Housing Blue Ribbon Commission. We have less people doing, you know, the, I'll say, a handful of homes a year. Overall, we're seeing less people do that type of work.
Sorry. Thank you.
Yep. So, the multi-family permitting, we had a couple of big years, 2013, 2014, and multi-families typically kind of come in bunches. So, but those were high years. Thereafter, you saw the 280, 190, and then they kind of came down, and then it comes back up to the 277 there in 2020. But since then, our big year was 2023. That was the 525. And now, we haven't permitted out of our office in '24 or out of '25 yet. So, there's obviously some concern. The overall number is 250 to 300. So, I'll kind of get to that on this next sheet here. Here's the trends that we're monitoring. Our overall growth rate is an increase of about 0.7% since 2013. Numbers are showing more recently and even probably a greater trend than that. When we look at our average annual decrease, it's a little less than 2%. And what we're saying is, that's where we're falling behind on that year-to-year, what we would need considering where that increase is at. In terms of multi-family units, we're expecting 250 to 300 a year, and we're just not seeing that. As I said, zero in '24 and '25. New unit trend as well is to go to smaller units. There's one and two-bedroom units are kind of seeing, we're seeing more of those as opposed to the three and four-bedroom. Rental vacancy is at a historic low. So, all of these things are just kind of combining that there's less housing available right now, and that's obviously going to affect the cost as well. So, near-term significant demand increase. We're seeing UND, a record-high enrollment, which is a positive for the community, but obviously a concern with the housing. Increased activity, again, Air Force Base, Grand Sky, things are going well, but they're also adding to those housing needs. Major job growth driven in agribusiness as well, and then Altru recruitment and retention. And you see letters of support on those two items that, as you see here, Altru and Air Force Base. So, appreciate those. They're certainly looking at that as being an issue for them as well, and they'd like to support us in that. Single-family development incentives. We have new home builder, new homeowner exemptions that are available, and that's our current process that we have. And then, we have the proposed on the state level, the 1,250 per year primary residence bill. It's currently at 1,250. We'll see what comes out of the bill when it goes final. Multi-family currently are incentives. If you're in a Renaissance zone, which is geographic-based, you'd have up to an eight-year exemption available. Pilots thus far have been focused on downtown and the campus area, the Memorial Village projects. And then, our proposal, you'll see that a little bit later, there's some pieces in front of you, are five-year, 100%. And then, we would not restrict that geographically. Similar model used on the commercial home builder exemptions that we've been working through as well. So, our aim is to obviously try to hit on some of these issues in terms of supply. In addition, we have, we're looking at, because we're trying to look at everything, West End housing development. So, this area is, I'll say, West Gateway area, it's south of the West End Walmart there. We're looked at proposal, 160 acres west of I-29. Looking at that, because that is an area that we recently put in, and I'll say in the last 10 years, a lift station for sanitary, which kind of opens us up for development. So, we're looking at ways to grow the supply of workforce housing in a meaningful scale way, create opportunities, options for residents, maximize units, minimize specials. So, we're looking at all those things. Here's what it could look like. The objective is, this could be 920 units overall workforce housing. Single-family detached would be 252, attached 210. Townhomes, Rojo-style, 98 units, and then multi-family 360 overall units. So, that's where the 920 comes. Looking at a range of options accessible to price points, development of smaller lots. So, we're looking in that, I'll say, 7,000 square foot range or less. Estimated overall about $330 million project cost with that. And you'll see a little bit here how we potentially look at one Senate bill and how we could, that could assist us. So, some of our cost analysis, city portion would be about 14.25 million in on that. Developer option, 14.25. Right now, those could potentially be the same. And then, looking at the state dollars, there's a Senate bill, 2225, would have about a million and a half in that. That's where we get our 30 million. And then, we've essentially looked at how we could spread that and what the potential lot cost, including all specials, would be depending on the type of unit it is. So, single-family detached, maybe in that 60 range, single-family attached, less than 44, Rojo's at 35. So, we're still refining this. This is very high-level still, but we're trying to refine, kind of look at options. Considerations there, again, a million and a half from the state. We're looking at phasing options, obviously, 30 million's a big piece upfront, and then exploring infrastructure efficiencies as well. So, working with our Public Works and engineering folks on ways to reduce those costs and looking at SRF, low-interest financing as well, special assessment, deferrals, tax incentives. So, we're kind of trying to look at all options here. Just for a quick placement, so this area that we're looking at with that project, it's up here. This is that Gateway Drive, I-29 here. In addition, we want to provide you where some of our single-family lots are at, scattered throughout the city. Majority, I think, in the south. We have 20, and I'll say this is kind of in the Garden View area. There's about 20 lots still available in that development. Recently, we had a Burke Holt's land, 42nd and 17th, that came through. It had some additional units on that one. We have 15. And so, you can kind of see where the scattering is. We have Grand Valley, Quarry area, and then we have some additional multi-family projects that are proposed later tonight. Those are where those green flags are, the pins on the map. So, just kind of showing you a layout of where these proposed projects are in the city. So, with that, kind of went through that quick, but just wanted to see if there's any questions and happy to stand for any.
Questions from Mr. Brooks? Yes, Ms. Lunskey.
So, when you said in 2023, there was 525 multi-family permits?
Not permits, units that came online. Units.
Units. So, okay.
Yeah. With this multi-family, it is number of units overall. And that's a, you know, anywhere from a studio apartment all the way up to, you know, a four-bedroom. Those would be the units.
That's what I was confirming. Thank you.
Okay. Yep.
Additional? Yes, Ms. Osowski.
When you talk about workforce housing, what exactly are you talking about?
Well, we're looking at entry-level typically with those. So, in lower end, in terms of not the $800,000 home, but something more in the 300,000 range potentially, something entry-level to get folks that...
Is a $300,000 home considered entry-level now?
I think it'd be difficult. We're not seeing any new homes being built for less than 300, I don't think, in town. We're just not seeing that.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's with another 20% or $60,000 worth of specials on top, correct?
Yeah. Yeah. And that's just on the new construction side.
Yikes. Any other? Yes, Mr. V?
What would the structure be? You look at it, you've got the city portion, a developer portion. How would you structure the program that you've identified on page 12? I mean, you look at land costs plus infrastructure costs for the single-family is $60,000, right? Before you build a home?
Yes, correct.
And then, you got the cost of the home. But what's the, what's the city's role in this type of a development?
So, right now, we're looking at it as potentially the city being the developer as well.
City would be the developer?
Potentially, yep. That's what we're looking at as an option. So, we're trying to provide all options and taking a look. I suppose certainly if somebody wanted to take a look and develop that, we'd still work with anybody, but that is what we're looking at, is potentially looking at the city being the developer out here as an option.
Have you looked at other models that would help, you know, get development going besides the city being the developer that would incentivize differently?
Well, I think we're having conversations with lots of developers out there. Right now, this is really looking at the landowner piece alone. So, we have probably a limited number of landowners. And this is, this would not be the city building the structures. We would be just putting together the land and then selling off the units. And we could discuss, we're looking at options of a way that could be sold off. But we would not be intending, this would not be the city building the homes.
But we are the developer.
That's what this proposal shows, correct?
I think Councilmember Vian probably more would be, would be the, the Grove Fund or Jobs Development Authority would be the developer, because they would likely be the purchaser of the property. And then, as you sold the lots, it would be returned to the Grove Fund.
And to interject, we would be taking, playing the role of the developer in terms of the financial upfront cost for the infrastructure. So, whereas a developer would typically be expected to pay for half of the infrastructure, we would take on that role to get the lots available for sale for home builders or multi-family builders to step up, buy the lots from the city, and then be able to actually build them. And by us doing it, we can do a larger development faster than most traditional developers in our community do it, making more lots available so that more builders would have the ability to build faster presumably.
Correct.
I think Council President Sandy, we'd likely also do some sort of request for proposals if we got that far down the road, so that we would then get private sector interest in both multi-family and single-family. And so, there would be a public-private partnership eventually, once the city, if the city, or in this case, the Grove Fund, did some of the work upfront to purchase the property.
Just feeling, why would we do that rather than just put a for-sale sign?
I think it would be a combination, but I think for the multi-family, I think we'd want to, I think that's where we would have competition. We'd want to have the best multi-family units that we could get in that area with the most value.
Doesn't doing that typically cause the price to go up rather than down?
If I may, President Sandy, I think it's twofold. First, you want this to be owner-occupied housing, so you don't want someone to snap up and build all these and they're turned into rentals. So, I think that's, that's item one. And if you were able to do a request for proposal where you don't have the lots bid on, but you're just picking a particular lot, you're not driving the prices up. That way, the city's not taking a profit. There's no profit gained when someone buys the lot, and you could potentially get smaller lots that aren't currently on the market. We don't have lots in this 4,000 to 7,000 square foot range going down to townhomes. So, like I said, it's, like has been said, I think it's an option. A lot more details would have to be figured out, of course.
Certainly. Yeah, certainly. Anyone else comments, questions, thoughts? Yes, Mr. Friedel.
So, I'm not sure everyone understands the urgency of this, right? I mean, this is, if you look at our industry and the stuff that we go through in city council, all the developments and growth that this city's going to have, do we know this looks like down here in the road? How many, like, how many houses and buildings do we need to have in order to, like, net zero for the quantity of people that we're expecting? Do we know what that looks like? I mean, building a couple of communities is great, but it doesn't solve the problem. You just continue to grow, and the housing's not continuing to grow with you, right? I'm just trying to see if we know an estimate of like, what, how urgent is this?
Well, I would say it's urgent, because right now, like I said, the trend, we're having an increase in number of people coming in, and we are, that, that single-family permits and the multi-family permits are not keeping up. And so, that's that urgency that I was trying to kind of show with that beginning part is there is a problem right now, multi-family. I don't know if we're going to permit any this year. Potential we'll have 150. We need 270 just to keep up, and I'm hoping to get that 150 in this year.
Because you look between like SDA and Agristo, which is going to come faster than, I mean, we're hurting.
Correct. So, I think... So, it is something that I know that we need to look at, and so, that's one of the reasons we're kind of looking at all these options. Yep.
Just very...
Yeah, Ms. Vian.
Quickly, what's the lots available right now total?
I think that was that second to the last slide. It was about 250 to, I'll say, 250 range.
That we have, that's all we have right now.
Yeah. That's a, and that would be two and a half year supply roughly. I mean, if we're doing 100 a year, which we weren't, that's right about where we're at right now. There's some additional ones that we could put in, that could be put in relatively easy to get us up to 300. So, lots apply, I don't know if not lots apply, if I would immediately say that's the issue. It's more along the lines on at least the upper end. We have, we have a lot of larger lot available.
We had a developer from Fargo that came up a few years ago and built a bunch of smaller ones. Are they still doing that, or did they quit that end?
Yeah, that, I would say that they still have some of those. I would have to, I still have to get with the person that they're purchasing from to find out if they've completed that sale or if those are, if those are getting turned back to that developer, see where they're at with that transaction. They have put in some, they were, they were probably our biggest supplier of homes in the last two years.
Ryan, in your presentation, under the multi-family incentives, we're talking about proposing just across the board, five-year, 100% pilot. I'll have to spend some time thinking about it. I don't, off the top of my head, have a problem with if it actually is encouraging a more multi-family building. But what we really need to do is figure out, and I think our proposed development out west helps with that, but what can we do for, to incentivize single-family homeownership? I know we can, you know, we can make an investment, hopefully maybe go out for RFP and dictate how some apartment units are built, but what about doing a five-year, across-the-board property tax abatement for single-family homeowners?
Yeah, we can see what the availability or what, what is permitted from the state level.
What is permitted from the state level? I honestly don't know. Mr. Gostad likely knows.
Pilot would not be, because it's not commercial or...
Sure.
And I think the, there are some incentives, like the $150,000 exemption is the only one that I'm aware of for a single family.
So, are we bound by state laws because of the property taxes that we need to collect for the other taxing entities, or is there any way we can be...
You're bound by those statutes as to the extent of your authority to grant those type of exemptions.
And I think we're currently maxed on those at the time.
That's perhaps a discussion for next legislative session. All right. Any other? Yes, Ms. Osowski.
Yeah, I guess I just have some comments. I, I don't agree with incentivizing these developers for, for any of this stuff. I really feel if everybody in our community was paying their fair share of property taxes, maybe our property taxes would go down, and then people would have more money in their pocket. I know that my property taxes have gone up like 20% in the past four years, and that enables me to be able to move to a bigger home. And so, I disagree with just giving these developers a bunch of tax breaks while the rest of us are sitting here funding it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osowski. Further comments or thoughts? Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Yeah, yes, Mayor Bocinski. Yes, sir.
I think we need to actually look at what these tax breaks do. If these projects don't come, you have less tax dollars. So, when you offer an incentive for a project to come, it's not going to happen otherwise. So, getting a large project to come in here like Agristo or others, you actually are increasing the tax base, so your property taxes will actually have the potential to go down. If we don't have growth over the long term, your solution's only going to lead to your property taxes going even higher. So, I think we have to look at this holistically. That was probably missing in our presentation last time. We talked about how the incentives work and how they can, how they functionally work with the state, but we didn't talk about what the benefits are. I mean, if these projects aren't going to happen, we don't have that increased tax revenue. We always talk about we're paying them. We're not paying anybody anything. We're taking less money for a period of time, but also, our tax base grows while we bring those projects in. They're a benefit during the TIF period, and they're a benefit sometimes 10 or 20 times more than that when the TIF period comes off. So, I wish 20 years ago that these projects were happening and more of them would have happened, because that would have accelerated our growth, our growth, and spread our taxes out farther. Well, it didn't happen. So, we can start today and try to make it better for future, or we can continue what we've done in the past, and it's only going to be the same story over and over again when new schools need to get built, new trucks need to get purchased, and a city, you know, you continually, continue to have inflation. If you don't have new growth, it's all the people that are currently here that are going to pay for that inflation. So, maybe a presentation, and maybe Keith Lund can get involved in that, showing that 100% of nothing is, I think, still zero. Mr. Lund, is that correct? I'd rather have $200 million of growth and take 10% of that with the potential down the road 15 or 20 years to have that full tax base. That's the whole purpose of doing these, otherwise, we wouldn't do them at all. So, just wanted to state that, and I think it's probably worth a presentation in the future to show not just how they work, but why we do them.
I think that was part of that presentation that we didn't get to at the, the second half of the presentation last week on tax incentives. We're showing some of those graphs, so.
Yes, I think it's quite telling that one of our... Yes, I think it's quite telling that one of our largest employers in the city has wrote us a letter indicating that the urgency and need is there and so it's something I think we do need to consider.
Thank you. Any further comments? Hearing none, great, moving on. Thank you very much, Mr. Brooks. Good info.
The bright side is there's a lot of good things going on in Grand Forks. We're very fortunate. These are, there are a lot of cities across the country that aren't having these same growth problems that we are. Discussion items, item 3.1, application for transfer of Class IV alcoholic beverage license for Charles and Tequila. Anybody interested in?
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Osowski, further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries unanimously. 3.2, application, transfer of Class V Hotel Motel Alcoholic Beverage License, Hilton Garden Inn. Mr. Weigl moves, second by Osowski, further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item 3.3, updated drug and alcohol policy. Anybody interested in updating our drug and alcohol policy?
Move approval.
Moved by Weigl, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Berg, further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 3.4, cooperative rehab agreement between Grand Forks, East Grand Forks Project 8730 Point Bridge Rehab. Good evening. Mr. Hunter, thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. Before you, is the approved cooperation for the rehab of Point Bridge. The project will be in '26. Basically, the agreement just lays out 50/50 cost share between East Grand Forks and the city Grand Forks. Our share will be 80% federally funded. Any questions?
Any questions? Oh, yes, Ms. Lunskey.
How long will the bridge be closed?
Um, the design has not been started yet, so it'll likely be a couple of weeks, given that they're gonna be scarifying and doing a two-inch overlay as planned.
Thank you.
Mr. Veen moves approval, is there a second? Second by Lunskey, further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thanks. 3.5, plans and specs for Project 8556, 2025 Speed Minders. Again, Mr. Hunter.
Yep. So this is approved plans and specs for city project. It's acquiring five speed minders for Discovery, Phoenix and Ben Franklin. The engineer's estimate is $42,000 with our cost share being 10% of $4,200.
Any questions? Questions, yes? Ms. Burt? No, I'm sorry, Ms. Lunskey?
Thank you.
Other Lunskey, other Tricia, thank you.
Um, we should just go first names, so it wouldn't be an issue. So Phoenix currently has one.
Correct. On fourth. So this will be on Belmont, north of Fourth and south of Fourth.
North, oh, there'll be two, north and south?
There'll be two for Phoenix, yep.
How far from the intersection?
Of Fourth and Belmont. That's to be determined.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions? Ms. Berg?
Motion to approve.
Move of approval, is there a second? By Lunskey, thank you. Further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Lastly, Mr. Hunter, 3.6, plans and specs for Project 8954 Fire Station Number Five Sidewalk.
Yep. Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. This is approved plans and specs for a sidewalk located to the east of Fire Station Five. It's approximately 450 feet tying into Park District Sidewalk behind Icon and then tying into the sidewalk on the north side of 47th Avenue South.
Questions for Mr. Hunter?
Move approval.
Moved by Osowski, second by Weigl. Further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Item 3.7, bid award and task order amendment for Project 8917, 2025 Bridge Rehabilitation. Mr. Weigl.
Good evening, thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. So we had two bidders come in on April 10th for the bridge rehab project for this year. Just a quick synopsis of what that entails. So we have four structures we've identified needing some CPR work this summer. It's gonna include some cracked ceilings, spall repairs, debris removal underneath the structures and a bunch of other miscellaneous items. A low bidder for this was Tony Anderson Construction, approximately 9% over the engineer's estimate for an amount of $364,595.
Move approval.
Is there a second by Berg? Are there further comments? I've got a comment. Mr. Weigl, it says in the staff report that we had to bring in an engineering firm because this is technical work and very important work.
Correct.
Um, we only had two bidders and the one bidder that we had is 9% over, plus we're leaving out two bridges that we know we need some work done on, but we're not doing that because we were worried about the cost. I, I'm not gonna support the, the motion because I think we should throw the bids out and we should rebid, try to get additional bidders, some that have experience working on bridges and include the additional two, the additional two bridges. So I think it's too important. The safety of our citizens is too important. Hey, Mr. Grazer, something to add?
I do. Just maybe a little more background on this. We, we've taken the approach the last year here. We wanna create a, a bridge rehab program, so we're, we're looking at doing it in, in measured approach, doing a few bridges every year and trying to keep them, keep them up as we go. So that's the reason we don't have all the bridges on the, on the list is, again, we're just trying to look at it from a financial standpoint. We did some of the same things with railroad crossings and things like that. We're trying to, you know, do those as, as more of a program system. So that's what we're doing. Again, this, we're trying to do early repairs so that the, the problems don't build up and get more expensive over time.
Mr. Grazer, does Mr. Anderson have any experience working on bridges at all?
He has, he has experience in concrete work and things like that. You know, we're calling it a bridge. I think it's, it's kinda unique because we did have a lot of people take up plans. I think there were like eight. And I think what the trigger was, was bridge, right? And you think of, you think of bridge and heavy construction. This is really, you know, more, it's, it's more spall repair, crack repair. It's very labor-intensive kind of work. It's not kinda your typical bridge where you're, you're really jackhammering out the, the deck and/or you're doing major repainting and things like that. This is more maintenance activity. So I think what happened is the bidders, when they saw that it was really an effort in labor more so than anything else or complicated technical items, I think we ended up getting just the two bidders. So I think that, that's why it is. Again, it's, it's kind of a unique type of work. There's nothing, there's not much that's highly technical in the contractor approach to what needs to be done. It's a lot of labor.
The staff report actually says that Houston Engineering has completed various projects containing these specialized techniques and materials to do this work. So the engineering firm has, I don't see any experience with the concrete people. No problem.
I can't tell you off, offhand exactly how, how many bridges we've worked with the contractor before. Again, you know, we're comfortable that the type of repair that we've got to have done here, it's, it's almost more reminiscent of what you'd be doing with a street repair project as opposed to normally a bridge. It, it kinda takes on more of that character of work, but.
Okay, no problem. There is a motion, is yes, Mr. Veen?
Just a quick question. Some of these are just box culverts, are they, are they not?
Some of them are.
Some of them are versus an actual structural bridge?
Yeah, we're not really doing a lot of structural elements. We're going back and repairing, you know, spalls and exposed rebar kind of things like that and repairing cracks. You keep the, the moisture from getting in. The 69th Street Bridge, there's some more excavation to get down into that one and, and just stabilize, make sure everything is stabilized out there.
I, I think one of the critical things is to make sure the traveling public's not put at risk, you know? And, and it sounds like your program is intended, is not doing that, but can you explain?
Yep. Well, basically, yeah, we're trying to make sure that we take care of these elements before they grow into a problem. Uh, you know, that again, starts to require emergency response. Again, this is really a proactive program. We're trying to take care of things when they're small, do them every year so we don't let anything get out of hand. We don't wanna let it build and have an unexpected, you know, $2 million, you know, have the, the DOT as they do, as they hire consultants to go through and evaluate bridges. We don't wanna all of a sudden get an unexpected bill on, on having to do a bunch of projects at the same time. So that's basically our approach.
One last question. Looking at the two bidders, the second low bidder was about $120,000 more? So you still feel comfortable that at the lower price, which is still overestimate, that we're getting a, a good bid?
I think that the second bidder was not really familiar to us and not really local, so I think that, that impacted, who was the second low bidder?
PCI.
Oh, that was PCI. We've had them do work. I think the fact that it's, it's a lot of labor is really driving it. But our recommendation is to, to do the repair work and award a little bidder.
Do you know, Mr. Grazer, do we, do we require our, our contractors to have drug testing policies?
We don't have one specifically for the city, but I mean, they have to, they have to be in compliance with laws.
Yeah, okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, unless there are additional comments or questions?
Just, just real quick one.
Yeah, Mr. Friedhofs.
So if you look at the estimate, I, I'm not a bridge expert. Like seating Class II, the, the low bidder bid $80 and the PCI Roads bid $4,500. The hydraulic mulch, they also, the low bidder bid 80 and the other bidder bid 8,500. How is there such a discrepancy between those dollar amounts? That's.
Sometimes on bids you can't explain it. The contract, I don't know, sometimes they maybe have interpreted a per-square-yard into a lump sum. I'd, we sometimes see oddities on bids that can't really explain.
There's some significant dollar values, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Friedhofs. Further comments or thoughts? Yes, Ms. Berg?
So if there were to be a more emergent bridge need that needed to repair, you would come before us again to have that fixed. This is just the maintenance of some to get this in motion.
It, it depends on the, the state of the emergency. I mean, if it was something that life and limb, we would take action immediately. As part of the reason you'll see later on, we have concrete repair contracts and some things coming for tonight. Those would be our contractual way of, of meeting an actual emergency. We would render a judgment at the time what needed to be done immediately versus what could be done later on. If there's work to be done later on in a larger scope, that, you know, that kind of thing would come back to the city council.
All right, good discussion. Any other comments or thoughts? Hearing none, there is a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.
Aye.
Why don't we do a roll call vote, please?
All right. Weigl?
No.
Osowski?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Lunskey?
Yes.
Friedhofs?
Yes.
Veen?
Yes.
And President Sandy?
No.
Motion passes.
Motion pass, 5-2, Sandy and Weigl dissent. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Weigl, appreciate your efforts tonight. 3.8, award bid, Project 8872, 2025 Water Man Replacement. Mr. Latex here, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. Bits for this project were received last Thursday on April 10th. Four bids were opened and one was rejected. The low bid of $476,400 was submitted by A&amp;D Excavating LLC and was approximately 9.4% under the engineer's estimate. And A&amp;D Excavating is a relatively new contractor in town, but we've worked with one of the owners in previous employment and we feel confident in their ability to perform this work. So with that, staff recommends to award the bid to low bidder, A&amp;D Excavating LLC.
Mr. Veen? Move approval. Moved by Veen, is there a second? Second by Friedhofs, further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Latex here, 3.9, award bid for Project 8927, District 791, reconstruction and CPR in 24th Avenue South, South Columbia Road to 34th Street. Good evening, Mr. Marier.
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. This is the 24th Avenue South Reconstruction and Rehab Project. We got three bids on Thursday, April 10th. The lowest bid was from Strata Corporation in the amount of 1.53 million and that bid was 8% under our engineer's estimate. Staff recommended that we award the bid to Strata for the amount of $1,537,513. Thank you.
Comments from Mr. Veen? Moves approval, second?
Oh, second.
Second by Berg, thank you, further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much. 310, award bid for Project 8884, District 793, 2025 Millen Overlay. Mr. Duxer, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. We opened this bid, or on April 10th also. We did receive three bidders, a low bid of $1,958,207. 20 was submitted by Strata Corporation. The bid was approximately 14% under the engineer's estimate. We would recommend awarding the bid to Strata Corporation and approve any necessary budget amendments.
Thank you. Questions? Moved by Weigl, second by Osowski. Any comments? Yes, Ms. Lunskey?
So is it actually Knife River? Because didn't Strata become Knife River?
Their deal isn't completed from what I've been told. It's still in, it's in process.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So, good question though. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Duxer, 311, award bid, Project 8880, 2025 Asphalt Street Repairs.
Thank you. Again, these were received on April 10th. Three bids were received, a low bid of $53,350 was submitted by OP LLC and that was approximately 2% under the engineer's estimate. Staff would recommend awarding bid to OP Construction.
Great, thank you. Comments? Friedhofs moves approval, second by Lunskey. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, item 312, award bid for Project 8881, 82 and 83, 2025 Concrete Street Repairs, Subdivision Concrete Rehab and Arterial Street Concrete Rehab. Mr. Duxer?
Yeah, thank you. These projects, again, were received on April 10th. Total of four bids were received. Low bid was $322,292 submitted by United Crane and Excavation. That was approximately 8% under the engineer's estimate and staff would recommend awarding the low bid to United Crane and Excavation.
Comments, thoughts, questions? Weigl moves approval, second by Berg. Further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Duxer, item 313, plans and specs for Project 8924, 2025 English Cooley Diversion Cleaning from 32nd Avenue to 47th Avenue South. Mr. Ryan, good evening.
Good evening, Council President Sandy and members of the committee. This project consists of removing sediment from the English Cooley Diversion. Over time, sediment's built up, lessening the capacity of the diversion. The city is required to conduct upkeep maintenance like this project on our flood infrastructure to maintain our eligibility for Army Corps assistance during a large flood event. to maintain our eligibility for Army Corps assistance during a large flood event. We'll probably continue to use this, utilize the flood budget for projects like this moving forward as well. Engineering recommends approval for plans and specs.
Moved by Osowski, second by Berg. Further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 314, plans and specs for project 8925, 2025 pond cleaning in 15th Avenue South in Belmont. Mr. Ryan?
Thank you. This project consists of removing sediment from the stormwater pond south of Lincoln Drive, just the entrance there on the west side of the levee. Like the previous project I just mentioned, it's routine maintenance that we're trying to keep our eligibility for Army Corps assistance moving forward and also to assist our Public Works Department in operation of the gates prior to a flood. So we're recommending approval of plans and specs.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Mr. Friedhoffs, yes, sir?
So if I'm reading right, the budgeted amount was 300 and the estimated construction at time will be 612, so it's twice as much as estimated?
We're probably going to look for a budget amendment at the time of bids, but basically at the time, I think we weren't thinking of cleaning out the whole thing, but just a portion of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Ms. Osowski?
This is exactly what I think we should be using our flood protection money for. So thank you. I can move approval.
Moved by Osowski, thank you. Second by Berg. Further comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 315, award bid for 8859, South End Drainway Flood Pond Expansions. Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, so bids for this project were received on April 10th. We had 10 bidders, or 10 received bidders and 10 that we opened. Gowon Construction was the lowest bidder in the amount of $1,059,809 and some change. We're looking to approve that. And this will also use the flood budget.
Thank you. We're increasing the size of the ponds on the south end so we can hold back floodwater locally, right? It becomes part of the flood protection system. It's a great, it's a great plan. Moved by Osowski, second by Berg. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Appreciate you being here. 316, create district for projects 8848, District 365, project 8849, District 620, project 8966, District 621, utilities for 47th Avenue South, South 30th Street and South 34th Street from Columbia Road to 34th Street and 45th Avenue South to 47th Avenue South. Mr. Grasser, good evening.
Thank you, Council President Sandy. Yeah, this one bears a little bit of discussion. This is not, the language of it is pretty standard. It sounds like simply creating a district and it is on one level. But I want to go back, how this thing fits into the, into the city overall system. Remember, we fought and got authorization here to put an interchange on 47th Avenue South. Part of what has to happen on the 47th Avenue interchange is it has to connect to something, obviously. And so the city responsibility is, if you think about it, we've got to get from Columbia Road to the interchange from the east and we get on the west side, we've got to go from the interchange over to 42nd Street, 48th Street, and we have to connect 48th Street to the north. And those are all in our six-year CIP. We've already looked at that and anticipated it. You know, the DOT interchange is really going to be probably whatever, they'll expand the interstate right of way, but it'll be interstate right of way to interstate right of way is basically what they will be doing. So you will be seeing over time, over the next five or six years probably, a whole series of these things coming through as we work towards being able to get that, that work accomplished. Right now, all those areas are basically undeveloped, unplanted, you know, non-annexed, they're rural farmland, right? But in order to get it, we have to kind of jump to that, those corridors to put those together. As we put the paving together, we also have to put in the sewer water storm. We have to bring all the rest of the underground infrastructure, you know, into that whole, into that whole system. This engineer's report anticipates some things that are happening. They're drawn up as if the right of way exists, as if the annexation lines are in there. They do not exist. Those are all things that have to happen. But I felt that it was easier to show what the end product, the goal and what we're heading to right now and the negotiations that we've had, where that would take us. And so basically, not to overuse the term, but I think public-private partnership comes into play in here. We have, first of all, we have a grant to, from the state to work on the paving from Columbia Road to 34th Street. That's basically our first segment that we're actually looking at building. That grant will work for the roadway, but not for the underground utilities. In addition, 47th has to drain, everything basically has to connect and drain to the north. And that's why you'll see work activities on, you know, 32nd Street and 34th Street. And that's as far as we're going at this point. One of the next segments will probably take us to 38th in some future, you know, year. But going back to the public-private partnership, so what we have is, you know, we've got the dollars, we've got the expertise. What we don't have is the land. And so we've been working with the property owner out here and, you know, how do we structure that? Because this is outside the edge of the development. It may take unknown number of years for the area to develop, especially if you're waiting for the interchange. The interchange itself is probably 20, 30-something. We don't have a commitment from the DOT yet as to exactly when that, the construction will happen. So it may be a while until everything. But in the meantime, we can't wait to build all those roads in 2029 or 2030. We have to get started on them now to go through. Again, the land acquisition process can be quite extensive. The actual construction project can be multiple years. So we're working on. So what you see is a concept that we have tacit agreement with the, with the property owner out there on. And so essentially, it entails that they would donate the land for the right of way. The city would then plat that. We would anticipate coming in and annexing that, but we would not annex the adjacent undeveloped properties. We'd carry those assessments as future assessment districts when the area is ready to develop. You know, those assessments would come on. It occurred to me and earlier to the discussions about how do we entice development and things out here, I think this is one of the things that can help a developer be able to get out and do some of this development because the basic elements of the, of the infrastructure will be in place. And so they're basically filling in. If you think about, you look at 47th and where the development is to the north, they're basically then can fill in. That happens quicker. You can make that decision, you can react to that, you can build on that fairly quickly. As opposed to when we're building into new areas, and my closest analogy is probably Grand Valley, where it took two years. You know, and by the time the design activities come, the lift stations get put in, the big storm ponds and things, you know, it basically takes two years. So again, this all, I'm trying to get a common thread, if I'm not losing people. So it fits into, you know, what we have to do for the interchange to make that happen. We bring what we can to the table as a city. The property owner, I think, is bringing what they can to the table without exposing them to, you know, special assessments for the next five or six or seven years till development actually starts to occur out there. So I think it's a, it's a pretty good win for everybody, but I needed to make sure that you understand some of this, especially on this assessment district, is showing some things that do not exist today. Right now, it's just open farmland. And so along with the agreement, I guess implicit with the agreement is a head nod or acceptance that this way of moving forward will be acceptable because we'll end up having to do this probably three or four, five more times over the course of the next five or six years. So we're kind of setting the stage as to how do we, how do we work with the property owners in being able to move this forward. I'm probably missing some things, but I've also probably talked too long. It's very complete in the, in the staff report. One thing I will mention on the water main that's, that is unusual, this is a location where we have a large trunk water main identified in the master planning document, 20-inch water main. It's very unusual. We have very few of them in the city. So in the staff report, what we're showing is to fund that. We are showing an application to the Department of Water Resources for funding the 60% share of that line. What we would especially assess to the developer would be kind of the normal 8-inch. We might have to calculate that because there's not much on this project. And then the city would pick up the remaining oversizing. So we're trying not to have that thing too unusual on the, on the development side. And again, those specials in here, if you look at the assessment district, those would all be anticipated to be future assessment districts. So it's one of the, one of the oddities in here I did want to point out amongst all the other oddities that I have going on in here. So it's a complicated little dance that we're trying to make work. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grasser. Yes, Mr. Veen? I would agree. The system is quite complex. So the city end up financing some of this infrastructure and then we would recover our costs with the future assessment district, right?
Correct.
And so otherwise, there's really no way to do it. I guess it all sounds really proper to me. I was wondering about the costs associated with the, with the interchange itself, especially the storm sewer. Normally with the DOT doing an interchange, they would do the storm sewer, would they not? And in this case, are we doing the storm sewer for that interchange or is that somehow being absorbed?
The, generically, the answer is yes. But we're, we are, you know, almost a mile away from the interchange. When you look at, when Southern Estates was master planned, it was all anticipated that, you know, this general area would go into the storm pond that's all the way up there on 40th Avenue South. Hydraulically, this segment from 34th to Columbia Road is totally independent from what's going on, what would happen with the interchange. So right now, it has nothing to do, I mean, just the interchange, what we're looking at, part of that will stay in the rural interstate ditches. We don't know exactly what that breakpoint is. But the stuff that starts to come into town is planned to go down 38th Street, which is beyond the scope of this project. Those are some of the complications we'll still have to figure out when we get to that point as to how to, you know, how to break that up and financially deal with it. But the good news is on this particular one, hydraulically, they're totally independent so they don't have anything to do with each other.
Is there a potential need for expansion of the south end drainway as we continue to develop to the south?
If we follow the plan that, that we proposed and the city council adopted over our south end drainway study, the answer should be no. Now, having said that, you know, if you remember, that has some oversized ponds, I shouldn't say oversized, they're a little larger than what we have now and they've got to have storage below certain elevations. The other thing, so tonight on this agenda, we saw the pond expansion project coming in. The next piece that will come in as part of that is going to be widening the south end drainway itself. We couldn't do all the expansion we needed within the footprint of the existing ponds. So we're working with the property owners as to how, that will be a purchase. You know, those will be purchases, those will be coming. We don't have all the things tied up enough yet with the property owners to bring it to city council, but that was presented as part of our south end drainway. Again, it's all flood protection. Making sure, so if we follow everything that we have in the plan, we should be able to handle everything down to Merrfield Road. Sorry for the long explanation.
Further questions or comments from Mr. Grasser? Anyone like the concept that he's proposing? Moved by Veen, second by Osowski. You have a question?
I'll second it. I just want to make sure I understand. So the current landowner is going to donate the land to us then and we're going to kind of forgive the specials for about seven years or just wait until it's developed or?
Yeah, I, we don't know the timeline that we'll be holding them, but I mean, it could be, I mean, it could be the timeline that you, that you talked about. I would guess it's going to progress in segments. I think once we build this, pretty soon the intersection of 47th and Columbia will, will look attractive and something will start to happen there within a shorter timeline. I think the farther west you go, you know, the longer, the whole development. And yeah, we will be holding some of those, but we will, again, we will recoup them over time.
All right. And then we hope to annex in this plot of land then eventually?
We will. One of the next steps that you will see, hopefully, is going to be a purchase agreement with the property owner. We call it a purchase agreement, but I mean, they're going to be donating the property. But within that, we'll describe what I talked about, that we'll do the annexation according to, you know, the right of way that we apply. So we'll have that and then we'll actually bring the annexation and the plat back through planning and zoning. What's a little bit unusual on this is we're doing all of this stuff internally with the city, our own city staff. So otherwise, you'd have probably seen this sooner, but we avoided a six-figure engineering agreement by doing this in-house with staff. So it's a little bit unusual. Normally, you'd see a consultant up here probably giving you a lot of this, a lot of this discussion. But I think it, it's working really well for everybody.
I guess I have a question for Mr. Gostad. So just say, Mr. Gostad, that then a developer comes and buys a chunk of land from this guy, like do pilots or TIFs exclude the specials?
They do not. Special assessments are unrelated to any tax incentives. You still have to pay the specials irrespective of whether you have a pilot or any other property tax incentive.
I guess I would like to know when we plan on, you know, collecting the specials, I guess then. I would like to have like a timeframe. I mean, what happens if this developer just sits on it and then we don't get any of our money back?
I'm not sure how to anticipate the unknown future, but you know, the developer, I don't think has any incentive to really sit on it. I mean, obviously, if they can turn that
You hope not.
Land over and, and get cash, it's in their best interest, I think. I'm more concerned about somebody selling land and us not being ready to be there with the infrastructure, to be honest with you.
Right. I mean, I, I like this route better than incentivizing, you know, the developer. I believe that we should be building our infrastructure out and so I think that that sounds better to me. But it just, and I think it's very nice that they're going to donate the land, but I would like a timeframe, I guess, on when we could start collecting on those specials, even if this certain developer, no matter what they do, I think there should be a timeframe put in there.
We can talk to the developer and see if he has any ideas or if he's got anybody already nibbling on anything out in these areas, but
Okay.
I mean, I don't want to imply that we can give you a solid answer to that. I mean, it's, development will sometimes, you know, if you, if you think about the presentation on development on apartments, you know, you've got a year where you've got 600 apartment units coming in and the next year you've got 20. Sometimes that's the way development goes. Something will, something will click and they'll, you know, several things will pop and then, and then it'll sit. And that's one of the reasons developers have concerns about being exposed to special assessments in the meantime because they can't control when somebody might want to come in. We can give you, you know, we can give you our, the best information we can gather, but I don't, I don't want to fool you that I, you know, I can bring you a solid plan.
But I mean, there's going to be an agreement with this current developer, I'm assuming in writing, correct?
Yes.
Can we put something in writing that's stating after so many years, they're going to start paying the specials on it or, I mean?
We could have that, we could have that discussion. We haven't had it to date.
Mr. Grasser, I think the alternative though is we risk not getting the state funding for the interchange if we can't come to an agreement with, with the landowner, correct?
Well, when you, when you start putting all the building blocks together, I mean, the short answer is yes. I mean, we, this is the very beginning. There's some of these like 48th Street, you'll, you'll see us coming in with a engineering RFQ on, on that. That process is probably going to take three years to be able, by the time you get that, start getting all of those components put together. So even 2030, which sounds like forever away, right, for the interchange, we got to get started to meet our end, to be able to tie those things together. So we need to come up with a good plan that, that's fairly easy to implement systematically.
2030, 1984 feels like yesterday, so 2030, we hear next week. Any further comments, Ms. Berg? Yes?
Yes, I appreciate your thoughtful and plan and approach on this and the beautiful savings of six figures. So thank you. savings of six figures, so thank you. How does it work for the funding to hold for years on the specials?
Thank you, Councilwoman Berg, members of the council. So what would happen, and this happens often where we have a future special assessment area. So it depends on what the project is and which utility fund it's going to be paid from in the meantime, till it gets annexed into the city, and then that fund will recoup over time.
It's no different than a tapping fee that we would have when we put water infrastructure in prior to annexation. Yes, Mr. Weigle?
Mr. Grasser, if we wait on this two or three years, we don't approve it, what are the construction costs going to look like going forward? I think every year, we see, what, 3%, 5%, 10% increases year over year. So maybe that's a rhetorical question, because I wasn't born in 1984, but I figure if we don't go forward at this, it's only going to get more expensive. So I'd rather get some of these projects done as soon as we can.
And if I can build on that, I think in addition to that, we have a grant, and I'm not sure what our timeline is on getting the grant. But yeah, we generally figure, we've seen a pretty steady increase in construction. I will say, though, we've got some pretty good bids in this last go-around, so it's never a straight line. But construction costs, we just assume are going to go up as you talked.
Further comments or thoughts?
Councilwoman Sandeep, I think maybe the best example we'd have is maybe we could present this as a south end drainway that was built for growth on the south end, and it's taken a lot of years to, through annexing property. That would probably be the best example. We could provide you over the last 25 years of a large infrastructure project that primarily was paid through the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, but through special, future assessments, and just show you all the growth and how it got paid back over time.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Mr. Weigle moves approval. Is there a second?
I think I was the second.
Second by Osowski.
I think Veen called, he moved approval, and I was second.
Okay, Mr. Veen, motion? And Osowski is second. Yeah, that's right. Okay, very good. Further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for the-
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. It's complicated.
Thank you, Mr. Grasser. That was great intel. Really appreciate it. Item 317, Cirrus Aircraft Tax Incentive Pre-Application. Mr. Phelan?
Councilwoman Sandeep, we're back with Cirrus Aircraft. I'm honored to be here with Mr. Steve Thomas, who's the site lead for Cirrus. And you did approve, back in January, a memorandum of understanding regarding this development. And the good news is that Cirrus is looking to move forward with their 30,000 square feet, foot addition onto their 170,000 square foot facility they have currently. Just to remind you, they're one of our largest, they have become one of our largest manufacturing entities in Grand Forks. They employ about 500 folks, so that's in our top three, perhaps top two sometimes. And they're in growth mode. So as we talked about, there, all the composites that go into a Cirrus aircraft go through Grand Forks. Really, this, the intent of this expansion is that we keep that from going away. And so this original, this current 30,000 square foot addition, we think is going to lead to another 60 to 90,000 square foot expansion within the next five years. So really, it's really impressive what all Cirrus Aircraft has done to grow and expand in our community. And when you approved the memorandum of understanding, you approved generally two things, that we would move forward with a pilot tax incentive of 10 years, 100%, and then also PACE financing. And the PACE financing would be broken down into two bank in North Dakota bienniums. One would be this current one that we're in, and there's going to be a future one here this summer, and that would be the second half of the PACE financing. Cirrus Aircraft is a primary sector entity, so they're going to meet all the PACE financing guidelines. So with that, Mr. Thomas is here to answer any questions. Mr. Lund is here to answer any questions. So what we're asking for you to move forward with is to approve the pre-application, number one. Number two is to allow us to go through the entire tax incentive process for this pilot, for the 10-year, 100%, which would include a full application. Would also approve us to move forward with the local government advisory committee. Then we'd move forward to the county and the school district, and we'd be back here for a public hearing. That's noted in your staff report on June 2nd of this year to finalize that under a public hearing. So we're asking to follow through on the pilot, and we'll also be following through the growth fund and the JDA and the PACE financing this, to June 2nd, and then the second half will come in the new biennium. So with that, any questions? And Mr. Thomas is here to answer any questions, too.
Mr. Phelan, do we have to do a CFIUS review with Cirrus every time they ask for something?
I think, I'll ask, I think they've been here to say they're already registered, I think is the right word with CFIUS, so they're under our current agreement with our federal government.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Osowski?
Last time Cirrus was here, when we discussed this, they told me that they send 1% of their earnings back to, they're owned by the Chinese government, by the Chinese military. They send 1% back. Their total revenue in 2024 was $1.2 billion. That's 11 million, or, sorry, $12 million that they are sending back to the Chinese military. I think we should be divesting ourself with China. We're still sitting on Chinese-owned farmland. I disagree 100% with this. I do not think we should be giving them any type of tax breaks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thoughts? Yes, Ms. Lunskey?
I think it's really exciting. It's, I thank you for investing in Grand Forks, and I'll move approval.
Thank you, Ms. Lunskey. Is there a second? Mr. Friedel? Yes, second with a comment?
We have followed up with the Air Force and other folks that are in, have a lot more investigative power than we do, and they are okay with it. So I think if the Air Force is okay with it, I think we should be okay with it.
Being our second or third-largest employer in town, they're with plans for growth, and they're just a great asset to have in our community. Other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Osowski dissents. Thank you. Mr. Phelan? Item, I think, are we going to have a general discussion related to the tax incentives for 319, 320, 321, and 322?
I think that's a good idea.
Why don't I read them all in, and then we can take votes on them individually in the future? Item 319, sorry, 318, yep, Greenview Living LLC Tax Incentive Pre-Application, 319, RTV MPS LLC Tax Incentive Pre-Application, 320 CK Commercial LLC Tax Incentive Pre-Application, 321 Northridge Construction Tax Incentive Pre-Application, and 322, nope, we'll stick with 321. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sandeep, thanks for, as you recall, Councilwoman Sandeep, you know, when we were during the COVID tenure, we did a lot of pilot tax incentives, and a lot of those projects are just wrapping up. I think Franklin on Fourth and Memorial Village the second are the two that are probably the last ones to wrap up. But during that time, you approved, I mean, it's probably taken four or five years to get to that completion. You approved Memorial Village 1 and 2. You approved Franklin on Fourth, The Beacon, and then all of Anna, some of our major pilot exemptions or tax incentives, sorry, Dan, I got to use the right word, that we move forward. So we're wrapping those up, and really, we tried to time these incentives so that we could have, similar to what we did four or five years ago, have another review of these. And similar to what we did back then, what I'm asking this evening on all these applications is to approve the pre-application. And different than what you just saw with Cirrus, where we're going to move forward, we have a specified timeframe, what I'm asking for is how we set this up, is that you approve the pre-application, that city council is serious enough to take them under further review. And further review for all of these applications would be that our third party would review their financial analyses to see what kind of pilot incentive that they, that they need to move forward with a development project, number one. It also allows us to look at, I've said in all the staff reports that these are infill developments, they're not going to require substantial infrastructure investments, but it also allows our city team to take a look at them from an infrastructure perspective, certain things that need to get done to serve the needs of this particular project. And then finally, the planning and zoning, there's two of these projects. One is the, I'll call it the Ray Richards Project, and the other one is the one near where a proposed new Hugos. Those would require planning and zoning review, too. The other two, Mr. Brooks tells me, are fine with the current zoning. So it just allows us to kick it off from an incentive, from an infrastructure, and also from a planning and zoning perspective to move forward. But before we get too far down the line, really, the pre-application is meant to say, is city council open-minded and willing to go through the process of vetting out these various projects? So that's in the spirit of which I come here. The first project is the Ray Richards Project. This one's been on the planning for a while. It is a UND proposal that a private sector development has proposed on. I would ask Kevin Ritterman from that development group to present on that behalf. But similar to Memorial Village 1 and 2, they responded to proposals. A group was approved, and they won a public-private partnership. So in lieu of, right now, it's zoned, I understand, as university district. So in lieu of UND itself developing what is explained here in the report, they've done an RFP, and they've picked a developer to go move forward with a project that they would like on this particular site. So similar to Memorial Village 1 and 2. And maybe with that, on the first project, I'd ask Mr. Ritterman to come up and just kind of explain, and we also have UND represented, as I see in the back row, too, and maybe come up to the podium and just kind of explain what their overall development plan is. And we know that from the Ray Richards development, there are some concerns with the neighborhood that's adjacent to it. And we could just go through the project themselves, since they and UND are the, really the developers of this particular project.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Mr. Ritterman, who are you guys?
Mr. Sandeep, members of council, and committee members, thank you for inviting us again to this beautiful setting we have here. Todd, thank you for those words. This maybe came a little quicker than we thought, but we've been working on this for the last year and a half. It is a P3, similar to what we've done with Memorial Village 1 and Memorial Village 2. We were approached by university to make an application to redevelop their driving range. It, we were selected, our group was selected to move forward with some ideas. Some of those ideas you've seen in your packet include some apartments, for lack of a better word, a sweet shots-type development, all-encompassing in those acres. It's about 12 acres. We are still working through a lot of things. Again, this is the pre-application. This kicks it off. We have lots of meetings to attend. We have the neighborhood meetings to attend. We know there's some concerns already. We have the financial piece. We're waiting for interest rates to drop, I hope. We're not seeing a whole lot of relief there yet, but costs, construction costs have not really gone down yet either. We don't anticipate them going down. We hope they just kind of say where they're at with the tariffs that are going on. But again, pre-application, we hope for your support. We've had lots of good luck here in Grand Forks. We got to keep the momentum going. If anybody's driven south lately, well, not very far, about an hour, you can see the growth that is happening, and it scares me how we're not keeping up with that. So on behalf of our group, we hope we, you know, support our next endeavor here and hope to get it done, basically.
And maybe, maybe Councilwoman Sandeep, since Kevin's up here, if you wouldn't mind, maybe we, he could go on to the next project, which I'll call it the Hugos Development-
Yeah, certainly.
-and talk through their thoughts on that one. And then maybe finalize the one on, we'll call it, off of 60 seconds.
Sure. So the second, do you have a question, Ms. Osowski? Oh, okay. Just had your hand up there. So the second project is off of 47th. It's a project that's been tabled for the last two years. We've had some pre-design done there. We've been waiting for a couple of things, obviously, interest rates to come back in correction and interest rates, and we just, we can't make that happen. We're going to need some help to move that forward. The, and that's been a difficult one, and that, again, is really preliminary. We know the amount of units we can put on there. We have to come back to planning and zoning and get that rezoned to add additional units there. But I think it's a good fit. I don't think it's going to be anything that the neighborhood's going to dislike there. We've got townhomes, and we've got commercials surrounding it. But we hope that, again, that one will get approval here, so we can move forward to the next step and see what Ms. Hugh will allow us to take there to kind of get this over the bridge. The third one is on 62nd, Kingsview. That one, I have owned that land for a few years. Again, I've gone to multifamily, well, it's zoned for multifamily up to 45 units. I've done single duplexes, single family, trying to make that project work. The only way to get additional units there really is the incentive that'll tip it over. Again, affordable housing is what we need. We will probably try to address some low-income housing, workforce housing through the Housing Incentive Fund, very similar that we did with Pure Development. Where Hugos is, that is a half-low to moderate housing, filled up quickly. And we hope to maybe do that here in some of these projects. We just don't know which one will fit quite yet. But again, a lot of these have been waiting, and it's time. You see the graphs, and I'm concerned we're two years out from anything really getting developed here in town. So we, as a community, really need to move this forward, I think, if I like.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Ritterman while he's here? Ms. Osowski?
Yeah, is he the speaker on all four of them?
He's on three, three of them. Not the Northridge, but 18, 19, and 20.
Okay. I, I guess here's a question that I have. So our tax incentives are, we have the TIFs, correct? And we have the pilots. Now, pilots, and I'm just trying to get this straight. Now, the TIFs, they're for the bleak in the slums, correct?
Yeah. This would be, this would be a payment in lieu of tax. It would not be a tax-incurrent financing project, or, you know, what you're referencing here is slum and blight. This is not a slum and blight.
Pilot under the economic development.
New and-
New economic development.
Are we considering them a primary sector business, then?
They don't need to be a primary-
For pilots, they do, don't they not?
No, you do not.
You need to be a revenue-producing enterprise.
Revenue-producing enterprise, okay. I don't like any of it. I, it bothers me that, you know, we don't do really too much for our citizens to lower their taxes while this man sits up here and wants three different tax breaks. So I disagree with it. I'm still not happy with Memorial Village 1 and 2. There's not even enough parking over there. Are we going to get into the same types of situations, then, with all these other developments? I, I don't know. I disagree with all of these. I, I think if they would pay their fair share, maybe my taxes would go down. I don't like giving out these tax incentives at all. So, thank you.
Mr. Weigle, comment?
I'll just talk on the first three. I think that when you look at 3.18, partnering with the university, we're collecting zero now on property taxes currently. So if that does get developed, we're going to be collecting a lot more when it gets done and into the future. Mr. Ritterman, I don't know if he, he's somewhere back there. Mr. Ritterman, you've been in the development business a while. How much do you pay in property taxes for all your properties, would you assume, every year?
I couldn't answer that. I should add that. I should add that up once, though. It's quite a bit. I mean- We've done a lot of work here in Grand Forks, and we've had incentives, and a lot of those have come off those incentives. You know, the one downtown, Pier's already five years into, it's 20-year pilot, I believe, it's 15. So we're five years there, we're 10 years, that's going to be full boat where our office is. That was a, I broke the mold then. I got five years, and we're 10 years, 12 years into that one, University Flats, slum and blight. That one, I believe, is coming off shortly, too. That's-
Do you wish you had commercial on the main floor of that building now, after all these years?
Which one?
University Flats. We argued a lot about that.
I know. It's okay. It's okay.
All right.
And we've got enough commercial downtown that we need to fill, so we're okay. And we've got enough commercial downtown that we need to fill, so we're okay there. Thank you.
Mr. Ritterman, quick question. Two of the three properties need to go through P and Z, and so what's the timeline for that? Are we, I feel a little bit like we're putting the cart before the horse when, I don't know how the neighbors, you think the neighbors over there on the south end are going to be okay with you adding additional units. Seems to me that every time somebody wants to add additional units anywhere, doesn't matter, could be 209th Avenue South, the farmers five miles away will be complaining that you're adding one too many units. So I'm trying to understand why we didn't go through the planning and zoning process first.
Good question, Mr. Sandy. I think we needed to see first if there is a general consensus here to move forward. We have a lot of work to do with the neighbors. We know that. University's going to be with us and that joint effort.
But you know, it doesn't cost us anything to say, ah, let's throw it to the accountants, the actuaries, and see what they say. Costs you $2,300, doesn't cost us a nickel, and two months from now, we can say, ah, we've decided we're not interested.
That's, we're rolling the dice here. Just trying to move forward.
So are you going to start the process for rezoning, like, right, not right away?
Start that right away.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure. Before we come back to you, yes.
Okay.
We're going to have a plan in place. We're going to have, meet with the owners next door and get their advice, if you will, and kind of see if we can make a game plan that works for everybody.
Great.
But we need to start somewhere.
Yeah, I agree. Yes, Ms. Lonsky.
Which development has the condos? So they're all apartments?
They're all apartments right now.
I saw that Memorial Village 2 has already booked two bedrooms for August, so congratulations. That's all.
It's going well. But there's another thing about the market. It's tight, and what are the rents are going to be in two years, I don't know. Right now, they're not matching, so we need help. We can't raise rents enough to pay property tax, building costs, land costs, and all those things together. So that's why we're here, for a nice P3.
I was heard it was called a fragile market.
Yeah, fragile.
Our market is fragile. I don't even know how to explain that to people, but, Ms. Berg, comment?
Yes. So is there a limit on how many tax incentives we can give out to various businesses?
There is not, but I'll look at, Mr. Goss, I don't think there's any number in century code that you can be eligible for.
Okay, so we can continue to give these out if more applicants come and want to also build and invest in our city?
Right. Councilmember Berg, I think, similar to what Mr. Sandy talked about, how many home builders do we have in town? If we had more home builders, it would be better. If we had more developers, it would be even better, too, as much as we love Kevin and his team. It would be great to have more developers. What they do is unique and different, and not all of us can do what they do. And so instead of criticizing them, we're trying to help facilitate great investments in Grand Forks.
Awesome. And then finally, I did a quick math here, and I'm looking at potentially 365 units coming to our community, and so thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's good. Yes, Ms. Osowski?
I guess I just have a comment. He just stated that without raising rent, you know, if we didn't give tax incentives, then he'd have to raise rent for people to afford to live there. Is that correct, what you said?
No, I think what I meant was, we can't, the rents can't support new construction without a P3 today.
So are we subsidizing people's rent with our tax dollars? Because no one's subsidizing my mortgage, so.
You can look at it either way. I'm just saying the rents in Grand Forks can't support the interest rates we have today, the construction costs we have, the land costs we have.
And the prevailing wages, the prevailing wages can't afford what you're saying it takes currently without an incentive.
Correct. That's why a lot of these have been tabled. If it doesn't get approved, I guess we can just, you know, move on and go somewhere else, I guess. But we're here to work, we're here for the community, actually.
Right.
Leaving it out. There's a little bit of risk in all this. There's equity that needs to be, there's bank financing that's got personal guarantees. It's not like we're filling up, you know, our back pockets. That's not the case here.
I just feel like we're subsidizing rent, then. I mean, if you can't rent an apartment in one of these buildings for the cost that it takes to build it, I, maybe we should scale back some of these developments, but, thank you.
But to Todd and the discussion, and Mr. Brooks, the discussion we had earlier, we desperately need more housing. So it's a catch-22, too. I mean, and unfortunately, we have a shortage of builders and a shortage of developers that are willing to take the risk in our community to build. So I recognize that, I think generally speaking, nobody wants to give any tax incentive. I much prefer our community could afford these things without tax incentives, but without doing something, we run the risk of stagnation or going backwards. Mr. Veen, did you have a comment, or Todd?
Yeah, I do, specifically to item 318 with the Greenview Living. I think, Mr. Ritterman, you talked about it, and you and I talked earlier, too, about the need to reach out and work with the public and the landowners next to you. In this case, we have the Gardenview Townhouse Association, and many of those members are here. I've gotten a lot of emails, and they're concerned, and I think rightfully so, of what's coming and the number of units and the change that that will mean for their current townhouse association. And I agree with everybody, there's a need, but I'm, again, it seems like we got the cart before the horse. We should be talking to the landowners, in this case especially first, because there is a concern about the development. And whether it's yourself or the university, or however that's going to take place, because there will be, I think, significant impacts to the people in that community that are immediately adjacent to it, and it's a significant change. So I think the timing is probably the issue, and I think there's enough unknowns to understand what is the impact of doing it, or I think the question would be, if we answer questions, can we delay it? Now, that one, I think we talked a little bit about zoning, and zoning is a real issue for that. And right now, I think, Todd, you said it was, it's university.
University zoning, yeah. We're, in speaking with Mr. Brooks, I mean, U N D could put on, you know, we talked about, you know, dormitories, they could do things that, they could put academic buildings out there. They could do those sorts of things that may not make sense. They probably can't afford to do it themselves. It's probably too bureaucratic, so, you know, they'll reach out to the private sector to do it. And maybe Council President Sandy and Councilmember Veen, so, I know we always get stuck a little bit in the Goldilocks conundrum of it's never quite right. So I think in this case, before we had everything baked, you know, two months from now, our thought is, well, let's bring the project in now, because what we've heard from councils, we want to see things first, so you're seeing things first. And we want to make sure that it's integrated, so it's integrated with the incentives, with planning and zoning, with infrastructure, so that we can work on a path, and so that everyone knows and nobody has to worry about, you know, why, like, the neighborhood could think if we, you know, got this thing further baked, they'd say, well, why didn't I hear about this three months ago? They're hearing it at the same time you're hearing it, and we're seeing all the challenges that we've got to have. But if we don't start now, my fear on all these projects, we know with Franklin, that project got started in 2020, 2021. We're sitting here in 2025, and it's just getting done. So whatever happens today, Al talks about the interchange in 2030, we're going to be sitting here in 2030, whatever we start doing today, will be getting completed right now. That's why we're bringing it to you sooner rather than later. We're trying to integrate all these things. We can wait. Waiting's easy. It's less risky. But from a development perspective, my biggest concern right now is that we have all these opportunities in front of us, and if we can't meet the goal of housing and what we're going to do for all these folks that are going to come to town, we're going to lose opportunities. That's a big risk, and only the city council will approve something one day. We're just asking, in this case, that we start down the road and start identifying things. And the other beauty of starting sooner rather than later, people may come up with things that we didn't even think about as part of these developments that should get looked at. At least we're here now, and if people have some ideas, we're here sooner rather than later.
And I would agree. You've got to start someplace, and you've got to bring it forward. We've got to have the discussions. I just think that hearing it the first time tonight and giving it preliminary approval without even having a neighborhood meeting, in this case, when you have this number of people that are concerned, is not good timing. Delaying it to allow that type of meetings and discussions to take place, I think is just common sense. It's good for the neighborhood, and it's good for us and our image to at least allow that to happen. I'm not seeing that on the other ones that are here, but more specifically on this one. And I do have concerns with taking, to be honest with you, a driving range and developing it. I mean, some of the aspects of the development are nice, but that level of development is taking park and open space and converting it in the middle of town, we'll never ever be able to get that back again. And so I think more discussion needs to happen, most specifically to this one versus the other ones who are on the fringes on the outside, and I've not heard of any negativity toward it. So it's not necessarily against it, but I think the timing is not appropriate, and we should allow a certain level of discussion to take place, is where I believe we need to go with this. And unfortunately, because of the way we do, we can't hear from the homeowners or the property owners, but I'm more inclined to hold on this one here. In fact, I'd like to make the motion that we table on 318 and allow the discussions to happen with the local, with adjacent property owners, and then bring it back. So I make that motion to table.
I second.
Further comment? I think, if I may, I think, I'm still a little hung up on process. We do, we have done, well, first of all, this is new. This is considerably different than what we've done for incentives in the past. We've concentrated on Renaissance zones in downtown. These are not in Renaissance zones nor downtown. And so we are going to be setting precedent for future developments. And again, I'm not saying we shouldn't. We desperately need housing. But again, I think perhaps we should have a discussion of, are we interested in incentivizing all across the city of Grand Forks? I don't necessarily have a problem with it, but perhaps other people do. What I don't really like is putting the cart in front of the horse. I'd really prefer to see this, these go in front of planning and zoning to make sure that we have the neighborhood, because if you're going to change zoning, you have to have the neighborhood meeting. It's a requirement. You have to have two meetings of planning and zoning, two public meetings at city council. Allow people to come and speak publicly on the concepts. I don't know if I wouldn't, so we have a motion in a second. I'm still mentally not sure if I'm going to support your motion to postpone, but, I mean, just, I'd really like us to make sure that we're following the right process and checking the boxes in the process in the right order, because, again, I feel a little bit like if we approve the, them moving forward to go to the accountants to look at this, it sends a message that we're approving the concept, when I'm not sure, just, it's easy for me to say, Ritterman's $4,400 is, or $4,600 is no big deal. He's, although he's not padding his back pocket, he has a few bucks in his front pocket, and he can pay that and whatever, right? So, but then, does that, what message does that send to the neighbors and the planning and zoning folks? I don't know. Ms. Osowski?
So maybe would you like to table all of them and have them go through the proper process and just thank them for making us aware that this is what they want to do? Because that would be the first process, is that it goes to planning and zoning.
I think only two of them need rezoned.
Okay. So two of them would have to go to planning and zoning.
I don't know how critical the timing is on it either. Mr. Ritterman?
Yes? For the good of the order? Just wanted to comment, just, we thought this was the process, so we apologize if we leapfrog.
This has nothing to do with you, Mr. Ritterman.
Okay. So we're just, we're trying to follow protocol here, and, so, yeah, we'll do whatever it takes. Every month delays, we have a short construction window here, so, but we'll do whatever it takes to work with the planning and zoning. One comment is, the 62nd project is zoned properly. If we could move that one forward and get to the next step, that would be grateful. The other ones do have a process to get to, and we can do that, too.
And, Mr. Ritterman, we do know that planning and zoning is going to require working with the neighborhood, anyway.
Yeah, absolutely.
So why not get that, that part of it started now?
And I would think we would do that. We, again, sorry if we leapfrog. I would have did that before, but we wanted to gauge your interest first, and as we spend more time and money on this, we wanted to make sure that you folks are on board, I guess.
Craig Tweeting, Community Contractors, good evening. Just a couple points on it. So I've been involved in this project for the last three years. The RFI actually came out three years ago on this project. Andy Armakost, from day one that we've been with on this project, you know, he has insisted that we work with the neighborhood. So the neighborhood is very important to Andy Armakost, just so you know that. And we want to be sure that we meet with the neighbors and do all that. I'd rather you not delay it. And first of all, is the golf course, you know, there's a big overpass coming on 42nd Street, and you're going to be closing down the golf course. We are going to be some time anyways, coming up here shortly. And that overpass is supposed to be complete, that end by 2027. And then we were trying to have this project also complete by 2027, and that was really coming from U N D. And also, the U N D golf team has also been moving into this site, and this is going to be their new home for the U N D golf team here. And so we're really trying to do a lot of things for the university, for the city of Grand Forks, and bring in a lot more, but really, the timing is really important, so, and you're right on the zoning, we maybe should have been here earlier on that, but we weren't supposed to bring anything forward yet. But I would really like you to approve it this way here, and we'll do a lot of extra work. If we waste money on it, then we do, and we go away, okay? But we'll meet with the neighbors. We've already assigned a team to work with the neighbors we have on our team. I think Lauren Ritterman is going to run that from Kevin's office. We've talked about this over a year ago with President Armakost, and so I'm hoping that you'll proceed to let us go forward with it, and we'll work on the planning and zoning right away. We'll start the neighborhood meetings right away, we will, and to make sure to get along with the neighbors, so.
How come all these processes can't go in parallel? They're very cylindrical, and I think if you approve tonight, P and Z can still go on, meeting with the neighborhood can still go on, and you still have all the length of time, but I just don't understand why it has to be one at a time. I don't see the harm.
And Council President Sandy, it's not the developer, I'm the one, you know, bringing these forward. I'm shepherding them through, and I know all the processes, so I'm just trying to get things to you sooner rather than later, knowing that we've got a multi-pronged effort. And I think even the feedback that they've gotten this evening is important, and the other really positive benefit is that people that maybe, I'll call it Down By The Hugo's Development, that didn't know that was coming, they'll probably likely more find out about it now than they would have known before. So it was really meant for the best of intentions to get projects to you sooner rather than later.
And then, our goal was to start this project this fall to meet the 27th spring deadline that U N D asked us. So they'd like to open up the golf course, the brand-new golf course, after the other construction is complete. This golf team would be there, we'd have new facilities there, so all this would be opened up at the same time, so that's what we're trying to, that's why this date was really important to us. But we certainly want to work with the neighbors. The neighbors are very important to us, so, to be a good partner. I know, once we did Mackrel Place, and those all over there, too, that's parallel with the same neighborhood, there was neighborhood meetings for that also. We needed the same group, you know, so here's kind of the same group we're having in St. Pierre also. So I'm hoping you're going to be okay with our team to let us go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goss, did something for the good of the order?
Just be mindful that you're not really not approving any type of incentive, you're not approving anything in that regard tonight. You're approving the process that would involve having any type of approval by the county and the school district. In addition, as I explained last week, you also need to make, before the council could approve this, would have to make a finding that it's in the best interest have to make a finding that it's in the best interest of the municipality to, to grant this incentive. So there's, there is a little bit more work to be done here. I think the way I'm understanding this motion is simply to commence the process with respect to the tax incentive. Obviously, the developer has to go through planning and zoning and a couple of them as well. But it seems to me that if there's a failure on the planning and zoning, or there's a failure in the tax incentive due diligence review, that will impact the development going forward, I presume.
So we have a motion in a second to table 318. Mr. Veen, you're still, would you like to move forward with that motion?
Yes.
And should we, just friendly suggestion, just change it to a postponement until some certain time?
I'd say at least we can postpone again, but do it for a month.
Okay.
And then have neighborhood meetings between now and the next month.
Okay. So postpone for one month. Is, do you accept that change? Okay. There's a motion in a second. Are there further comments, thoughts? Yes, Ms. Burke?
So Mr. Gossett, we, do we have to make that determination tonight on best interest of the municipality?
In fact, I'd recommend that you not make any type of finding on, at this point.
Okay. So why don't we do a roll call vote? Ms. Dorsett?
All right. Thank you. So I have a motion by Veen, second by Osowski, and the motion would be to postpone for a month. Weigel?
No.
Osowski?
Yes.
Burke?
No.
Lonsky?
No.
Friedals?
No.
Veen?
Yes.
And President Sandy?
Yes, for the sake of argument. Thank you.
Motion, yes.
Why do I always have to go last?
We have four no's, three yeses.
Okay. Thank you. So in that case, is there a motion on 318, 19, and 20? Moved by Weigel? Yes, we may separate them. Is there a motion on 318 by Weigel, second by Burke? Further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Osowski and Veen dissent. Is there a motion on 319 and 320?
So moved.
Moved by Burke, second by Weigel. Thank you. Any other comments on those? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Osowski dissents. Thank you. 321, Northridge Construction Tax Incentive Pre-Application. It's the same concept, the same thing. It's just for the development that Northridge Construction is talking about on the south end of town. Moved by Lonsky. Thank you. Second by Burke. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Burke dissents. Weigel is absent.
Osowski dissents.
Osowski dissents. Thank you. She's starting to, starting to lose her hair. Okay. Item 322, Public Safety Owen. Thank you to Ms. Tweeting, Ritterman, Cirrus Aircraft, and Mr. Miscavich for the important investments in our community. It's very, we really appreciate it. Although we might not sound like it, we do. We appreciate, we appreciate it.
President Sandy, we still have 3.21.
322, that's correct.
321.
Oh, we just, that was one we moved.
We only held three votes and...
We did two together.
We did two together.
We did three, 319 and 20 together. The last one was 321. When Weigel wasn't here for the last two minutes.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. 322, Public Safety Answering Point, Department Restructure and Termination of the Joint Powers Agreement. Mr. Phelan?
Thank you, Council President Sandy and members of the community as a whole. What we're asking, currently, right now, the fire department has integrated 911 service or PSAP services within one of their divisions of, of the fire department. What we're asking you to do is to make that permanent. As part of making that permanent, we think it's the right fit for 911 service or PSAP services. Number one, the fire department works in a more of a collaborative team-like manner, which I think is really going to fit the 911 center better. The other issue is that with, you know, local law enforcement, there is competing demands. And to be frank, fire department is probably a better team for 911 folks to work with. So we think this is the right fit. I'm going to ask Mr. Lorenz and Mr. Markot to come up and say that in their own words and, and their better words. The other thing is, we're asking you to dissolve the authority board. And it was really an authority board in name only. It really didn't have the authority that you would think about with the airport authority. So we think now that we've integrated it with the fire department, it's really just part of the fire department services. We don't need an authority board. There really never was an authority board. We do want to work with Mr. Gossett, so those same entities that want to continue to work with the city of Grand Forks as part of the PSAP center. We would come up with user agreements. Like all things that the fire department do, they'll create user groups and that sort of thing. So things are going quite well, but it's just another symbol or sign of just the kind of terrific departments we have, the terrific leaders we have in Grand Forks, that fire departments led by Mr. Lorenz will step up and take over more responsibility without more pay, without more pay and all those sorts of things. It's, yeah, it is quite incredible. And I think it keeps all of us on this leadership team wanting to do all the great things for the city of Grand Forks because we do really have a terrific culture. We've got a terrific team. And when people are asked to step up and do something, you know what they say? Yes. Even if they don't, aren't part of, you know, whatever happens, right? So I just want to really thank Gary. I want to, I want to thank Mr. Markot, who's really doing the day-to-day thing, and have him come up and say, you know, what their initial impressions are, what their road forward is, and why they think it's the best fit, despite them probably not 100% of them wanting to do it at this point in time. So with that, I'd have, ask them to come up.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Chief Lorenz, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the council. Deputy Chief Markot and myself have been engaged now with the dispatch center for about a solid two weeks. And, and you know, at first, with the transition, it's a little awkward. You know, everybody's trying to figure out what their roles are going to be and what's going to change. And since that time, we've had some really good conversations with the dispatch center employees. And I feel every day that goes by, that's getting a little bit easier. To kind of tell a little story, when, when we were approached about taking on the dispatch center, and this goes back, made it sound a little corny, but it's, next month will be seven years ago when I came to the city of Grand Forks. And at one of the first department head meetings we had with, in the department, I said, we're going to make decisions when faced with significant issues based on three things. What's best for the community, what's best for the department, what's best for our personnel. What's best for me isn't in the equation. And this was exactly one of those scenarios. It really didn't matter what I wanted. We need the dispatch center. It's one of the most important functions we have in public safety. It's how we get out the door to answers the phone when they call 911. So this is a, this is a big one for us. Deputy Chief Markot and myself are committed to doing everything we can to make this successful. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Do they have any questions for the chief?
So you're willing to take on this extra responsibility and it makes you happy? I don't want you leaving. So.
What's that?
I said, so, so you're...
It's a challenge. And it, it's not about being happy or not happy. It's really about what we need. We don't, we don't have a choice. I mean, we have to have the center. It's an important function. Everybody there is important. And...
Will we be saving any money with this restructuring? I mean, I know we got rid of one department head, so that saves us a little bit, but...
Councilmember Osowski, I think, we've said in the report, I think it'll be generally neutral because what will happen is Gary and his team, they'll likely backfill with a manager on type position that, you know, plus or minus will be approximately the same.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. I move approval.
Moved by Osowski, second by Lonsky. Anyone have any further questions or comments? Mr. Veen, certainly?
Right now, they operate, like you said, under a joint powers agreement. What type of new, I mean, if you look at it, there's a lot of entities that are under this joint power. Now it's going to be a city department, right? Do we have either any liability associated with this as a city? I know. And, and do the others have to agree or can they, I suppose, opt out or whatever that needs to be done? Because it's, the form has been successful up till now. Has it not?
As far as I'm concerned, it has been. I think that those entities will still have very much a say. I intend to, and Chuck Mark, Deputy Chief Markot and myself talked about this, we're going to still have that operations component where they will have a say on the kind of service that they're being provided and, and to make sure it's consistent across the county, which are the services we provide. It's not just for the city of Grand Forks.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I believe in the staff report, it lists all the agencies that are dispatched.
Yeah. Do you, is these Grand Forks involved in our dispatch?
No, that's Polk County.
Okay. So everything, it's state line and...
Yep. Grand Forks County.
Okay.
Yep. And we've, we've got, we've got a lot of room for improvement, which is a great challenge, right? And so it certainly presents challenges, but also great opportunities for us to do new things. I am also a little concerned about doing away with the joint powers agreement, simply because the people at the table are also helping pay the bills. And so I'm not exactly sure how they're going to feel. I mean, all true, they're, they're benevolent. They'll say it's no big deal. At the end of the day, when, when we tell them we need to increase the price on them, when they haven't been sitting at the table, it may become problematic. But I'm, most of our, well, everyone's rational and reasonable. And so I'm cautiously optimistic that we won't run into any problems with them.
You know, we're cognizant that, that cost is an important factor. Right now, we've got two big lifts going on in the dispatch center, one being the implementation of a new CAD system, computer-aided dispatch is what that stands for. It's a very expensive, very big project that we're moving forward with, along with the upgrade of a Viper system, it's called. Think of it as a heavy-duty network cloud-based system that we're moving to that allows for a backup dispatch center in a different part of the state. But along with those updates, we're hoping to be able to dig into data very deeply to see how much, not only how many calls of service we're looking at, but how much airtime and how much time each dispatcher is spending on the different calls for the different entities to come up with whatever that fairest cost breakdown is.
Great.
President Sandy?
Yes, Mr. Weigel. Welcome back.
Appreciate it. Just a couple of quick things I serve on the PSAP Authority Board through my role as a city council member. I appreciate Gary and his team taking this on. I've said for a long time that the Authority Board truly didn't have the powers that maybe any other Authority Board had. And realistically, looking at everything, I think the county and UND were, were simply customers for a long time. I appreciate Chief Lorenz taking the time over the weekend to have some good conversations with me regarding, you know, what this looks like and, you know, is there opportunities to maybe modernize billing and everything else. And I've got faith in, in him and his staff that they'll be able to do all these things and be able to provide a good service for all the other entities that, that really depend on 911 services within our community and within our county. And I would just remind people that this week, I believe, is National Telecommuter, National 911 Dispatcher Week. And so if you have an opportunity, thank our dispatchers for all they do. It is a very difficult job and we appreciate the work that they do.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Weigel. There is a motion and a second on the floor. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item four, I think. Councilmember comments for the good of the order, Ms. Osowski?
No, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Burke?
No, thank you.
Ms. Lonsky?
Just a reminder that Wednesday Bites starts on Wednesday, so head to Town Square for your food truck. Changes every Wednesday.
Oh, great. Mr. Friedals?
I had an opportunity to go through Fourth and Franklin today. And wow, that is a great building. So I'm excited for the food venues that are going to show up in there. But it's a, it's really nice. Icon has moved there, one of their offices in there, and it's a, it's a beautiful facility.
That's awesome. Thank you. Mr. Veen?
Nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Weigel?
No, thank you.
Hear nothing. Mr. Phelan, not everyone knows, but there was a violent attack by a panhandler on the Hugo's manager, the store manager here downtown. There was a panhandler on the south side of the building, standing with, using crutches. And the store manager told the person that they weren't allowed to be on their private property. And he threw his crutches and ran after and violently attacked the store manager. I'm saying this because I want people to be diligent. I, our downtown is safe. It is. But there are occasionally bad characters. So I want people to be paying attention and to be diligent and be thinking if they see, and if they see things, they should call 911 and report it to the police. Also, I'm going to go back to the bridge discussion we had earlier and the renovations, whether, whether Mr. Grasser called it an actual bridge or not. I am a little bit concerned about having, taking the lowest bidder for, for a project. I'm, I'm even more concerned that we don't have drug policies, drug testing policies for organizations, contractors that win projects that, that are sensitive and could be a public safety issue in our community. I know the federal government requires random drug testing for construction companies on federal projects, especially on projects when we're, when we're looking at potentially safety concerns in our community. I think we should move to a drug testing policy, a requirement, just generally speaking. But I certainly would on, on any sort of a project where we're working on bridges or things like that. So I just think that's something for us to consider in the future. Okay. Well, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move adjournment.
Thank you. Second by Burke. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody.